I want to address the moderator. Each committee also has a microphone to be used by the chairman for comments and questions. The chair may designate a member of the committee or board to speak when appropriate. Committee members wishing to speak as individuals should use the two microphones assigned for the residents. When approaching the microphone to speak, the proper procedure is to address the moderator as Mr. Moderator, who will then recognize you. Please respond with your full name and residential address when speaking. All questions or statements should be addressed to the moderator. The moderator will then request a response from the appropriate part. We'll be using electronic voting here tonight. All registered revoters received a device when they entered the auditorium. When asked to vote, please do so by entering 1A for a yes vote or 2B for a no. You make a mistake voting, you may re-enter a vote by pressing the appropriate number. You can repress those buttons all you want, but your device will only record the last choice you make before voting is closed. All right, we're going to test. Will LaZappa continue as the Patriots' starting quarterback? You may vote now on A for yes, 2B for no. There is no C vote. Okay, voting has now expired and the vote is 72% in the affirmative. Poor Matt, not going to be happy. Okay. With that being said, and it being 7 o'clock on October 17, 2022, the town clerk has indicated a quorum is present. I will call our annual town meeting to order. At this time, I would ask that you please rise for the pledgable votes. I'm quite relieved. The power of the United States of America, and two republics, which stands one nation under God, is the sole, the only, and the justest law of all. The town clerk will now read the warrant. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts-- Nothing versus. We have a motion and a second to disperse with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 1, to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, or take any action thereon. Article 1 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move to pass over this article.
A motion and a second to pass over. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. 97% in the affirmative. The vote, the motion to pass over passes. And I, I should have, I'm sorry that I failed to introduce the town administrator, Mr. LaFawn. My mistake. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid notices, or take any action thereon. Article 2 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the board has recommended favorable action on this article. The Finance Committee has recommended approval up to $12,000. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move that the town pays the following town administrator unpaid bills as presented in the guide for the October 17, 2022 town meeting. Yes, total of $8,281.74.
We have a motion--
Aye.
--and a second. Thank you. For discussion, Mr. Towne Administrator--
These are bills that are incurred at one fiscal year, but cannot be presented or submitted in a timely manner to be paid during that fiscal year. Usually they're too late for the town account to accommodate the costs into the next fiscal year. So these are bills, they were properly incurred, they just basically late, they, I'm sorry, general laws require that this be a fourth-fifth vote to incur these, to pay for these prior year incurred bills.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the article as presented, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. 60 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative. The motion is passed. I failed to mention too that there was a fourth-fifth requirement for that. I apologize. It was cut. Thank you. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient for the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices, or take any action thereon. Article 3 sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move to pass over this article.
Motion and a second to pass over. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor of passing over Article 3, vote 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. 61 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. The motion to pass over passes. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient for the water unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices, or take any action thereon. Article 4 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move to pass over this article.
We have a motion and a second to pass over Article 4. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor of passing over Article 4, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. 58 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. The motion to pass over Article 4 passes. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to appropriate for fiscal year 2023 the following cable access budget in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, or take any action thereon. And in your handouts, you'll see two accounts, one for salaries of $40,000, and one for other charges of $30,000. Article 5 is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move that the town appropriate $70,000 to the cable access budget in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, as printed in the October 17, 2022 guide.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Discussion, Mr. Towne Administrator--
Mr. Moderator, this is an article that is presented in the spring annual town meeting. It was inadvertently omitted this year, just an oversight. The funds are being appropriated from the receipts to the cable access operations, so this is not something that's going to in any way impact the general fund.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put it to a vote. All those in favor of approving Article 5 as presented, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. 58 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative. The motion to approve Article 5 as presented passes. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay costs for a water system improvement project consisting of the design, permitting, and bidding of two PFA's water treatment plants and water meter replacement. The project will consist of a water treatment at the Bigelow Road site, water treatment at the Memorial Beach site, and a system-wide advanced metering infrastructure water meter replacement design phase, PFA's water treatment plans upgrade, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to determine whether this operation shall be met by borrowing, or the potential of borrowing from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, or otherwise, or take any action thereon. Article 6 is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM have recommended favorable action on this article, and as a borrowing article, it would require a 2/3 vote for approval. Mr. Towne Administrator--
I move that the town appropriates $2,050,000 to pay costs of a water system improvement project consisting of the design, permitting, and bidding of two PFAS water treatment plants and system-wide water meter replacement, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 7, Section 8, and Section 29C, or any other neighboring authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that the treasurer, town administrator, and any other appropriate town official are each authorized to take any actions necessary or convenient to carry out this project. While any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote shall be general obligations of the town payable from any and all sources of revenue, it is the town's intention that the debt service on such bonds or notes be payable in the first instance from water revenues.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open up for discussion. Mr. Towne Administrator--
Just briefly, initially here, this project design will include two new water treatment plants on water department property for treatment of PFAS substances in the town's drinking water wells. In addition, the water department, as the water department continues to have high unaccounted for water at approximately 26%, this would also account for a water meter system upgrade and replacement of approximately 58,000 water meters and radios.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Dawson with Eaton Drive. The project that was recently completed in the past few years, I'm aware of which, was that a water treatment project on the episode of House Austin? Or why do you keep spending more money on treatment plants in the public? Project on Memorial Beach is in progress.
The Memorial Beach project, I could even pump up the water source if I had it. The Memorial Beach project goes to the iron and manganese treatment, strictly a memorial beach. And what we're talking about here tonight is PFAS treatment at both locations, Memorial Beach and Bigelow. We didn't anticipate having a PFAS issue. It's a national issue, and we must address it.
Well, Austin, you say we have control.
Yeah, like you said, it's not something we planned, but we do have to address it. We have no choice.
And I would add that currently the town has an application for the state revolving fund, and that would provide a 0% loan, as well as possibly up to 20% to 40% forgiveness of principal indebted principal. So it's very important that this vote happen in a timely manner, because if it doesn't, the town will have to withdraw its application and will not be eligible for potential financial assistance.
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, we recently violated the MCL for PFAS for the NASTEP standard, which is 20 parts per trillion. It was quarter three this year, and then also previous quarter three of '21, with similar precedents. We have not been operating Bigelow well long term because of that issue, so it's currently in standby mode. Now, EPA has a 70 part per trillion threshold currently, but they've also recently released an advisory level for several of the PFAS 6 that we're told of now. And I can share with you that we're not going to meet the advisory numbers at any of our wells. That's everything at Memorial Beach and everything over at Bigelow. EPA will be ruling later on this year much lower limits than even what NASTEP is advertising. So the likelihood of us ever meeting PFAS at any of our sites is a scary thing. So, you know, like Rick said, this is our opportunity to go after the funding. We've already put our application in mid-August for the construction portion of the treatment, and part of that process requires us to appropriate money for the design. So if we're not able to get those funds and move forward with the design, we'll have to remove our application from the state's process, and then that will push us out another year. And as it is now, even if we were, let's say we got approval tonight to move forward, it's going to take us a year to complete that design. This time next year, we'll get above the 90% level with hopes to go out to DIT the following year. And that means PFAS treatment won't even go online till 2026, so any delays tonight push us out another year. That's 2027. That means, you know, EPA does their change with their MCL later this year. We definitely won't meet that, and we certainly are not meeting NASTEP as it is now. So yeah, this is a big problem for the water system, and I agree, it's very expensive. It's not something we thought we'd have issues with. The first round of sampling, April, May of last year, looked kind of promising, although it was over the 10 parts per trillion action level that the state has set. So the MCL's at 20, but anything over 10, they don't like to see. We're lucky, Memorial Beach, we're currently able to blend, so we're able to keep it below the 10, but there are two wells right now that run between 15 and 17 parts per trillion in Memorial Beach. So the likelihood of meeting a future EPA limit is slim at this point, but like I said, we're not meeting DEP's numbers now, and blending in Memorial Beach is what DEP considers a short-term solution. They asked us to put together an action plan with short-term and long-term solutions, and our long-term solution is PFAS treatment, and they're offering zero interest, 19.8% loan forgiveness, and possibly upwards of 40%, but we're told that we most likely will get the 19.8 as a minimum, but we'll be pushing for upwards of 40, hopefully, and looking at other avenues as well. We're doing everything we can to keep the cost down. We recognize that it's expensive, but keep in mind we'll be spreading it out long term over, like I said, 20 years, so hopefully the impact will be that significant.
Mike Dawson, if you can make your point, how did everybody understand the first place? Did you not test it on a regular basis?
We actually did not stop testing until April, May of last year, and labs most recently just came up with the testing and approved testing method for us to test, so we were never able to test at parts per trillion. And I think the first round of the uncontaminated, the unregulated contaminated sampling was done, I want to say 2014 or '15, somewhere around there, and we weren't able to test at those levels, so we didn't see any of it. And we really didn't see this PFAS issue until April or May of '21, and it was just above the 10, so we kind of were slightly relieved, but that quarter, quarter three that year, we exceeded it at Bigelow, so we just never expected that to happen. And, you know, and the new advisory numbers that are being floated around by EPA, we're not even able to test at those levels. It's next to zero. So, you know, I'm not sure if the future holds, but I can tell you, I assure you that PFAS is one of them, and the longer we wait, the longer the list of communities will be that jump on board. A lot of the smaller systems are actually just starting to test now under DEP regulations, so the list of communities looking for funds next year is going to be a lot bigger than it is this year.
So I think you answered my question. So a lot of other towns are going to go through the same problem in the future, and have to--
Yeah, well, this is a, this is a nationwide issue. I know DEP is state of Massachusetts has 150 communities right now. This time next year will be 300. As they work their way through the smaller systems, the list is just, it's just going to grow. And what's strange about PFAS is you might not have it one quarter, but the following quarter, if you do, we try to figure out, well, jeez, is it seasonal? Is it drought-related? Is it weather-related? You know, last year during the summer, we had a lot of rain, so the summers would get washed in there when we're close to the French River. Well, this year, guess what? We have drought, yet I got even higher numbers, so I really can't explain where it all comes from, and we're still trying to understand it, but it is a national issue for sure.
Sorry. Also in regards to Mr. Dawson's question, this is Randy Becker, chairman of Board of Selectmen. A number of things have changed over the past few years. Tom just mentioned you couldn't even measure these levels. So if you think of a number, it used to be 70 parts per trillion. Prior to that, it was parts per billion, so you've never got into the trillions. So it used to be 70 with 12 zeros following it. Now it's 20, or will be, according to the state, it's now 20 parts per trillion. That's 12 zeros following the 20. It's literally impossible to measure that. I think, you know, I'm not sure if it's true, but if I ate food from a Teflon pan, cooked it, and I went and I gathered those samples, my breath might cause 20 parts per trillion. It is something that Dudley has had to face, knowing possibly saw this coming with the federal government with their 70 parts per trillion, and now our state, believing that it is a health issue, reducing it to 20 parts per trillion. Dudley is facing, I think they've got their work being done, I think it's a 13 or 14 million dollar PFAS removal plant for roughly 26 or 2700 users. So I agree, I think it's 150 towns now, it'll probably be 80% or more of the 350-plus towns and cities, but it's something that we just have to deal with. If we don't deal with it now, we're going to be subject to consent orders. It will get done, but it will get done better now if we have the backing of the zero interest rate, as well as the potential, at least 20% funding, grant funding from the, from the state, maybe up to 40. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself, sir.
Okay, well, I'm going to go on 21 more straight. I want to know what you're going to do with the filtration, what about pipes? What about the pipes in town? I listened to you guys last year about that, about the brown water. We had brown water, very bad. I called Resinsky, I had a pipe replaced from my house to the main to go shut off. That didn't work. The town came in, went from shut off to the main. We saw what these pipes look like. People would think about this, because the pipes need to be replaced before you go and filter them, so they're two bad pipes we need in the whole town. We got no pressure, we still got brown water. We were supposed to have it cured, nowhere a beach. Now you're telling us we need another one. When are we going to do the pipes? After we vote on this one? You're going to tell us we need another 50 million for pipes?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
We can answer that. Earl, the Board of Selectmen, and also a member of the Water Sewer Commission. I think we, we have a capital plan that was put in place a few years ago when this percolated, and we have been replacing pipes. I think you need to understand, just on Lake Street, which is underway, that's a $2 million project. We have the $10 million water treatment plant that we're financing, and we have a complete surprise with the PFAS that is, is recognized as a health issue. Various issues, we're trying to put money where we can. We've raised rates 35% over the past few years, and that's primarily to pay down the treatment and continue with the pipe replacement. We're aware of the condition of the pipes, and some areas of town are worse than others. I'm a homeowner in the older section, Precinct 2 in Webster. I have a house filter. I filter my water. I deal with it. I drink mostly tap water, but I have a filter. That's the way it is, and PFAS, like I said, is, is brand new on the scene, and they're taking a very hard line at it, and it's something, for those with health concerns, we need to address. We can't keep just pushing it down the road. We know that, that there's going to be a price tag to that. We know it's going to be paid for under the water funds. We don't know what else to do other than phase it in. We still plan on continuing replacing the pipes, albeit we might have to hold back on that a little bit, or slow it down a little bit, but we've replaced five streets so far, and we have a few more on the books. That's, and, and the capital plan, we're still adhering to that. It's, it's, Lake Street was $2 million, a little plus. Prices keep going up, I think, as everyone knows. So the next street this is long as Lake Street will probably cost, you know, 2.4, 2.5 million, who knows? But we're trying the best we can, and we're trying to recognize the impact that it has on all the rate payers. Thank you.
In relation to the timing of the water treatment plant versus the pipes, just to address Mr. Budong's question, the reason the water treatment plant was put in was to eliminate the iron and manganese, so it wouldn't continue to go through the pipes. That's why it was done first. This was discussed over numerous meetings. Time Vaughn recommended it. It makes logical sense. If you remove the manganese and iron from the water, which is what the treatment plant is doing, it won't be then accumulating in the pipes. We've gone through as a town decades of never replacing water pipes. If you look at some of the pictures of the pipes that are on the water department site, you'll see that the tuberculi in there, they are so occluded, you can barely get water through them. And I think what the town, through the Water Commission, and through the Selectmen, and through the Water Department has tried to do is they've identified areas that have the most complaints. And I'd ask Tom to come up and say, how many complaints have we had in the past year compared to what we had, let's say, three or four or five years ago? I'm sorry that individual houses still have some brown water. The only way the town knows of that is if people call in. And I believe, I'm taking a risk here, because I know the interim, but I'd ask Tom to comment on it, that I think we're way, way down with regards to complaints.
We only, we only receive probably half a dozen complaints a year now. I mean, it is a significant drop. I know talking with other staff members, there were days where we would get hundreds of phone calls. And now, you know, I've been here a little over a year now, and I can tell you that maybe four, five, six at most. So I do think the iron and manganese removal at the source has definitely helped. I do agree that, yes, we need to keep going with the pipe replacement plan. We're doing our best to try and manage that plant in a respectful manner and not drive the rates just through the absolute roof, replacing everything. Plus, to be truthful, you know, these projects-- Plus, to be truthful, uh, you know, these projects are a lot of work for our department, so we've got to manage that as well, our workload and scheduling, and, and I think we've got a decent balance right now. Um, and we'll continue talking to the Water Service Commission on what that, uh, the ultimate capital plan looks like.
Okay. We're ready to move the article. All those in favor of passing Article Five as, Article Six as presented, will press plus 1A. All those opposed, 2B, because this is an authorization to borrow that will require a two-thirds favorable vote to pass. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. 58 yes, 12 no. That is a, what was it? 80? 83%? Thank you. Article Six, the motion to approve, pass. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay costs for a lead service line inventory and for replacement program. The 2021 lead copper rule revisions require the public water systems to complete an inventory of utility and customer-owned service lines connected to its distribution system and prepare a replacement plan by October 2024, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to determine whether this appropriation shall be met by borrowing with the potential of borrowing from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust through a 100% loan, forgiveness loan, or otherwise, or take any action thereof. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have recommended favorable action on this article, and as a borrowing article, it will require two-thirds vote for approval. Mr. Towne Minister.
I move that the town appropriate $200,000 to pay costs of a lead service line inventory and replacement program, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasury with the approval of the Board of Selectmen has authorized to borrow said amount in accordance of GL Chapter 29(c), GL Chapter 44, Section 7 and Section 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the Treasury, town administrator, and any other appropriate town official are each authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. While any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote shall be general obligations of the town payable from any and all sources of revenue, it is the town's intention that the debt service on such bonds or notes be payable in the first instance from water revenues.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Towne Minister.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Cutler, sir.
Thank you.
So this article, uh, is to create an inventory database of our service line material. Uh, there, there was a very complicated rule that was recently put out by EPA, failing with 21, and it basically stated by October 2024, we need to have a solid inventory of what's out there. Uh, that means what kind of pipe, you know, do you have plastic, copper, uh, black iron, uh, or do you have lead? Now, our records are not that great, uh, so we don't really have a good handle on our inventory. And this money will be used to further investigate what we do have, including spot checks out in the system. Uh, we might be going to properties to check, we might be excavating services and whatnot to see what's there. I can share with you that we don't have a significant lead and copper issue per se. We sample 60 sites per year based on the age of the structure. Uh, it's considered high risk, and, and we get favorable results, but EPA has a very aggressive plan in place for all public water systems, uh, and we must comply. And with our, our current database and the information we have, we won't meet their, their requirements. So this, this will help us further define what our plan looks like. The future could be, you know, if we don't know what's there, then maybe it goes on to a replacement program, and we start actively, uh, replacing the services. Uh, this is all a result of actions or lack of action that took place in the commission many years ago, and EPA spent the last four or five years working on this, and it's a very aggressive plan. Uh, money will be utilized to further define how Webster handles our inventory and possible lead issues. But like I said, we don't, we don't see it in our sampling, uh, but we must meet this new rule, and this article will help us do that.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, we're ready to vote on Article Seven. All those in favor of approval as presented, press 1A. All those opposed, press 2B. Because this is an authorization to borrow, it will require a two-thirds favorable vote for approval. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. 15 in the affirmative, uh, 53 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative. It's a 78% approval. Article, the motion to approve Article Seven, pass. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $15,000 to fund a human resources and policy review, to review the current state of the human resources systems, staffing, policies, and practices, identify areas of deficit, and recommend areas for improvement, organizational structure, and policies to be adopted, as well as a recommendation for the steps necessary to build a modern, modern human resource operation and structure with appropriate staffing, with clearly defined roles and responsibilities. We'll also provide the town with a comprehensive set of draft policies to be adopted, or take any action thereof. Article Eight is sponsored by the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article. Mr. Towne Minister.
I move that the town transfer $15,000 from the town stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the human resources review as printed in the October 17, 2022 guide.
Motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Towne Minister.
The motion is pretty, um, descriptive, but this would, the scope of a project like this would be for a total review of human resources program. Uh, the review would include a review of, uh, current state of human resources systems, policies, and practices, with a goal of identifying areas of deficit, recommending areas for improvement. The methodology will include interview of department heads, key staff, review of records, policies, and practices, and includes, includes over 45, review of over 45 policies and practices. I know the town has made a commitment and dedicated funding in the last several years to improve our human resources operation, and this is a way of kickstarting this, this process. This is also, um, I don't want to speak to the personal advisory board, but this is a conversation that we've had with the, with, uh, personal advisory board over a good six months, and I think we're all looking forward to, uh, jump-starting a better, more professional human resources operation. And if I could, one, one more thing, Mr. Moderator. With regard to this article and the next article, we're requesting funds from stabilization. Uh, be aware that we have approximately $4 million in stabilization. Uh, the funds here would be, uh, replaced at the next annual town meeting, and the goal is also to increase our stabilization fund substantially over what we actually have right now.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just to remind you, it is a two-thirds vote, yes.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, we're ready to vote on Article Eight. All those in favor of approval, press 1A. All those opposed, press 2B. And because the, uh, source of funding is coming from stabilization, it will require a two-thirds favorable vote for approval. Oh, voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. 50, 50 yes, 20, 14 no. That's a 78% approval. The motion to approve, to pass. The motion on Article Eight is approved. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the Treasury a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding capital purchases of projects as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereof. And you have a list of departments and projects, including police, fire, town hall door security system replacement in the amount of $150,000. Mr. Towne Minister.
I move that the town transfer from the state town stabilization fund $150,000 for the purposes of this article as printed in the October 17, 2022 guide.
Motion and a second to approve. Open it up for discussion. Mr. Towne Minister.
Uh, yes, there's approximately 13 doors, um, police doors as well as four, uh, fire doors, uh, that don't work properly at the moment. Uh, this goes back to a, a problem for most from the outset of this project. Uh, at the time, the units, uh, the technology that was utilized were so-called pre-production items, uh, that have not been installed in many communities throughout the Commonwealth. This is a safety issue, uh, that has to be dealt with and outstanding for quite some time. This would also include, uh, if feasible, the, uh, exterior doors at the town hall also.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, Tom, Tommy and Ray, John and Wayne. Um, I did notice that they said that parts weren't available. Uh, I worked in that business of hard access systems, and I understand that you can't get parts that ship to sale, give too much trouble. I just wanted to be sure that when you have a new system in, that you get some guarantee of parts, for example. In the industry I worked in, we did hard access systems, hard access systems. At the end of production, we would guarantee parts for 10 years. So if they produce that system from 2010 to 2015, for example, we would be guaranteed parts till 2025. And again, the old system, there's not much you can do about that, but I'd like to see you get some sort of contractual obligation that'll fix it for the next 10 years.
Greg Glitsky, the director of the Southwestern County Communications Center, um, which is located in the station, I've been, um, very heavily involved in this, um, since we moved into the building. Unfortunately, the decisions were made as to what devices were being used, um, by the architect for the building. Um, we learned as we started to have failures as recent, or as soon as about a year into occupying the building, that the products were not production products, so therefore there was no guarantee for replacement parts at the end of life of production because they were never production. Um, the architects selected these items based on aesthetics. Uh, they did not have your typical releasing strike plates, and the readers were built into the doorknobs, as opposed to being a separate reader, as you would typically see in most buildings, to include this building here. Um, the product that was selected, of which it took us over two years to even find someone who was able to get the product because of the supply chain issues. Uh, the product that was selected, I'll, I'll mention a name for you, it's HID. Um, it's a pretty standard product, uh, typical reader on the side of the door and a releasing strike plate, as opposed to a functioning doorknob with aesthetic wire on it, um, that did not work. So, um, we, we do not see a concern at the moment with any type of availability of product on this line, other than the current supply chain issues, um, as it is a standard design that's been used for several decades in the access control business.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, we're ready to put Article Nine to a vote. All those in favor of approving as presented, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Because the source of funding is coming from stabilization, it will require a two-thirds vote. Voting is now over. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. 57 in the affirmative, 8 in the negative, that's an 88% vote. The motion to approve Article Nine, pass. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain or otherwise, parcel C, parcel D, parcel E, and parcel F, as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land Tracy Court, Main Street, Frederick Street, Peter Street, Davis Street, Phase Two, Webster, Massachusetts, dated September 11, 2018, prepared by A.S. Elliott Associates. Set plan on file with the town clerk for general municipal and/or public way purposes, subject to such easements and reservations of rights, and on such other terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate. Two, to convey parcel B, as shown on said plan, for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate. And three, dedicate parcel A, as shown on said plan, to public way purposes for a portion of Davis Street. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to act in such manner necessary or reasonable to carry out the purposes of this article, including the execution of any and all documents and instruments related thereto, and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine appropriate, or take any action thereof. Article 10 is sponsored by the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on this article. The Finance Committee has referred to sponsor. Mr. Towne Minister.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, parcel, gift parcel C, parcel D, parcel E, and parcel F, all as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land Tracy Court, Main Street, Frederick Street, Peter Street, Davis Street, Phase Two, Webster, Massachusetts, dated September 11, 2018, prepared by A.S. Elliott Associates, set plan on file with the town clerk for general municipal and/or public way purposes, subject to such easements and reservation of rights, and on such other terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate. Two, convey parcel B, as shown on said plan, for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate. And three, dedicate parcel A, as shown on said plan, to public way purposes for a portion of Davis Street, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to act in such manner necessary or reasonable to carry out the purposes of this article, including the execution of any and all documents and instruments related thereto, and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine appropriate.
You have a motion? Do you have a second? We'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Towne Minister.
Uh, yes. Keep in mind, this is actually an article that was essentially submitted by the redevelopment authority, the board, and of course, our administrator. So the purpose of this is for the town to acquire by gift six parcels that would provide maintenance, repair, and improvement capability to Davis Street. These six parcels would obviously, uh, within that would establish rights away, that coincides with the current physical, um, like, the current physical condition, would allow for the completion of future phases of the Riverwalk in the downtown area, and guarantee the town the right to maintain, repair, and improve Davis Street in the future. right to maintain the current approved Davis Street in the future. I think most of you know that that location is also very popular for town events and a venue for many performances, et cetera. So this is a gift to the town. No remuneration is necessary.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article Ten to a vote. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, two B. Because this property is being gifted, a simple majority vote is required. Voting is now over. Time for voting, having expired, will now post the results. Sixty in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to approve Article Ten, pass. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster zoning map, referenced in Section 650-13 of the Code of the Town of Webster, to rezone the portion of one parcel located at 516 South Main Street and 15 Prospect Street, totaling approximately 30,641 square feet from the current zoning of multifamily residential to a zone of general business four, as shown on the map entitled Town of Webster, Proposed Zoning Change from Multiple Family Residential to Business Four, 516 South Main Street and 15 Prospect Street, parcel D, 1J10, and ID 1J20, and on file with the Board of Selectmen, or take any action thereof. Article Eleven is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen has recommended favorable action on this article. The FinCom Committee has referred to sponsor. I will also say that I have received from the Planning Board a letter indicating that they also have voted to approve Article Eleven. Mr. Towne Administrator.
I move that the town approve this article as presented in the warrant.
Motion, second, to approve. We'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the graphic, the graphic on the screen will show the current zoning. Oh, I am so sorry. M. Morgan, Director of Planning and Economic Development. So the graphic on the left shows the current zoning. There's a lot going on in South Main Street when it comes to zoning. You'll see that line that runs right down, basically, the middle of the page splits the address of 516 South Main Street, which is currently a vacant lot between two zones. The commercial zoning, which faces onto South Main Street, is on the left-hand side of that line, and the multiple family residential zoning is on the right-hand side, the east side of that line. The developer, or the person who owns the property, also owns 15 Prospect Street, and I've been with the town now over five years, and we get repeated inquiries as to how they can move forward with developing the site specifically with the intent of a commercial development facing onto South Main Street. It has been hampered by this split zoning. The zoning line is very interesting, because the assessor, Mr. Becker, Mark Becker, had told me, that actually runs along the historic property lines of when there were multiple lots facing onto South Main Street. You know, for the years, the lot had been assembled and created into one piece with, unfortunately, a split zoning district. They can be problematic for anybody who owns a property with a split zone, but it's especially problematic when it's a residential zoning district that abuts a commercial zoning district. So we have had people interested in developing the lot, but the zoning has kept them from doing so because there was not enough land there to meet all the site plan requirements. That the Planning Board would need to make sure that all of the essential, you know, circulation and health features were, prevent things like stormwater, and is there enough parking and whatnot. During the Planning Board meeting, when they discussed the proposed change, which would wrap the business zoning around those, the rest of the parcel, to create one potentially developable lot, there was discussion that this abuts a very dense, multiple-family residential neighborhood, and special care would be taken for any development that was proposed on that lot to ensure that the surrounding residential neighborhood would not feel the impacts. So on the right-hand side, you'll see what that new zoning line would be. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to put Article Eleven to a vote. All those in favor of approval as presented, press one A. All those opposed, two B. As this is a zoning article, a two-thirds vote is required for approval. Voting is now over. Time for voting, having expired, will now post the results. Sixty, affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to approve Article Eleven, pass. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank you all for coming and participating here tonight. Very much appreciated, I'm sure, by the entire departments here in the Town Administration.
Mr. Moderator, may it be before we, Mr. Linsky makes emotional adjourn, I just want to say, even though not a lot of articles, it's a lot of work to put together, Warren. I want to thank our Assistant Town Administrator, Courtney Freeman, and our Finance Director, Tim Bell, who really are attentive to detail and the effort goes into this. You wouldn't believe what a headache this is. I want to thank everybody, but in particular, Courtney and Tim.
Okay, voting is all. Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all once again. Don't forget to turn in your trickers on your way out.